Good evening, everybody. It is confirmed that we do have a quorum present. So with that being said, I'm going to call the annual town meeting of June 22 to order at 6:02 PM. And I'd ask everyone to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silence to honor our civil servants and military personnel, along with our frontline personnel who are dedicating lives protecting our freedom, safety, and democracy. Thank you. You may be seated. Thank you. As a reminder, if there are any visitors wearing an observer badge that are not a registered voter, we'd ask that you sit over along the picnic table area. Please take a moment to silence your cell phones. And if you are here as a registered voter, please be sure that you've checked in and you've received your pink voter card. We'll be using these tonight to vote, so it's important that you have one if you would like your vote counted. At this time, I'd like to take a minute and review a few procedural rules. First off, tonight, everyone is expected to be respectful of everyone in attendance and of the meeting itself. You don't have to agree with everyone here, but you must remain respectful. As the moderator, I have the right to reserve anybody who is not conducting him or herself in a manner to ask to leave. Going forward, I'm going to read an article, an emotion, and then it will be moved. There will be a five-minute limit for the person who moves the article to make a presentation about it. Any resident wishing to speak for or against an article may come down to the microphone that is located in the center. You'll be asked to state your name and address clearly for the record, and then you'll be given up to three minutes to talk. At the conclusion of three minutes, I will thank you for your comment, and you'll need to stop speaking. After every resident who wishes to speak has a turn, people who wish to speak again may have another three minutes. You'll notice tonight that there are wipes and a trash can up there, so if you do speak, please keep your mask on. You can go up, wipe down the microphone, throw your wipe in the trash. We'd ask that you come up through the center aisle, and then you can walk around the sides to get back to your seats. There are indicators that have been spray painted to keep people six feet away. All questions and discussions should be directed to the moderator, and if appropriate, I will then ask someone on our stage to respond if that is appropriate. Please don't address a previous town speaker -- excuse me, a previous speaker, a town official, or another resident directly. Discussion and questions must be relevant to the motion that we are voting on, so it's my job to ensure that this rule is followed. I will limit discussion if a comment or discussion is not relevant to the scope of the article being voted on. Throughout the evening, there may be instances where I allow non-residents to speak, even if they are non-residents. If they can contribute relevant information to any article being voted on or offer expertise to a matter at hand, provided there are no objections, they will be permitted to speak. At this time, I'm going to take a minute and introduce everybody on our makeshift stage here. So from the very end, we have the Board of Selectmen, Kevin Soret, Jennifer Dean-Wing, Jennifer Gill, Andrew Alward, Erica Blake, our Town Administrator, Peter Caruso, our Town Attorney, Brian Riley, our Town Clerk, Diane Lockwood. And over here, we have our Finance Committee Chair, Audrey Bono, Adrian Pettit, Ken Tubman, Brian Pacheco, and Gary Gill. And I'm Jackie Lima, the moderator. A few other quick announcements. We do have an ambulance that's stationed here. This is a very unique venue tonight. If anybody is not feeling good, if the heat is getting to you, it's very muggy, please let us know. There is emergency personnel right behind you in the tents, and we have an ambulance on site. I would also like to take a minute to acknowledge, this meeting tonight is very different, and it's been put on with a lot of help and cooperation. So I would like to take a minute to acknowledge the planning that has gone into this. Largely, Sherry from our Board of Health has coordinated a lot. Our Town Administrator, our Highway Department was here. Cable is doing a fantastic job setting this up. Public Safety, and we have some MEMA directors. So it's been a real group effort and one for the record books. So with -- thank you. So without any further ado, we will commence the business of the meeting. So everybody should have been handed a warrant when you walked in. We're going to do things a little bit differently tonight. Normally, I read directly from the warrant, and then somebody on the stage makes a motion. In the essence of time, I will propose a motion, and somebody on the stage will actually move it. So the wording that I'm going to be saying might be a little bit different than the warrant, but it will be very similar. Just bear with us, and I think everybody should be able to follow along. If there are any questions, please raise your hand. You can come to the microphone, and we can get through this together. Article 1. I'm looking for a motion that the town vote to authorize that any motion or amendment to increase any monetary articles or line items as recommended by the Finance Committee presented at this town meeting shall be out of order unless such motion or amendment states the source of funding as being from available free cash or the line item, article, or other funding sources that will be reduced by the same amount. Is there a motion? There's a motion by Aubrey Bono. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Brian Pacheco. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. Again, we're voting with your pink cards. We're not yelling yea or nay. So if you want to vote yea in favor of Article 1, please raise your pink card. If you want to vote nay against Article 1, please raise your card. The motion passes, and I declare it unanimous. Article 2. I'd be looking for a motion that the town vote pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 64, to raise and appropriate a sum of $2,750, which is necessary for the purpose of paying the following outstanding bill from prior fiscal year, and it's an insurance deductible for legal defense. Is there a motion? There's a motion that's been made by Aubrey Bono. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ken Tubman. Is there any discussion? Aubrey.
I had a question on this one, probably for you, Peter. It says FY '13 on what I'm looking at. Is that correct? So I believe the motion is for prior -- the bills for prior fiscal years. Is that --
I'm sorry? It requires a four-fifth vote. But I think Aubrey's question is that it says FY '13.
It says prior fiscal years.
Prior fiscal years, okay.
So any prior--
So any prior fiscal year, so that is for fiscal year '13. It's a very outstanding. We're catching up. And this requires a four-fifth vote. So again, we've got a motion and a second. The amount is $2,750 for an outstanding bill from FY '13 for legal defense. All those who are voting in favor and would like to say aye, please raise your card. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your card. The motion passes. Okay, Article 3. So I'd be looking for a motion that the town vote to transfer $47,842.36 from free cash to fund the deficit incurred with the snow and ice budget per Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 31D. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Aubrey. Is there a second? Second by Gary Gill. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your pink card. All those opposed, please raise your pink card. The motion passes, and I declare it unanimous. Article 4. We'd be looking for a motion that the town vote to accept and expand such sums or sums of money allotted to or to be allotted to the town from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts under the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 90, or any other -- or under any other state roadway reimbursement programs for the fiscal year 2021, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into a contract or contracts with the Massachusetts Department of Transportation, Highway Division for such purposes, and further to authorize the treasure with the approval of the Board of Selectmen to borrow in anticipation of 100% reimbursement of set amounts. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Aubrey. Is there a second? Second by Adrian. Is there any discussion on this? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your pink card. All those opposed, please raise your pink card. The motion passes. Article 5. I'm looking for a motion that the town vote to transfer from the PEG, P-E-G, Access and Cable Related Funds account the sum of $7,500 to be forwarded to the Superintendent of Schools of the Blackstone Millville Regional School District for use by the Director of Library and Media Services to enhance the curriculum offerings that are available to the school. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Erica Blake. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jennifer Dean-Wing. Is there any discussion on this article? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in -- are you raising a question? Or you're ready to vote? All those in favor, please raise your pink card. All those opposed? The motion passes, and I declare it unanimous. Article 6. This is going to be the budget. So I would be looking for a motion that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $6,413,578 as deemed necessary to defray town expenses for all departments, including debt and interest and compensation for town officers, and to provide for the Reserve Fund for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2020, and ending June 30, 2021. With some appropriation to be funded as follows. Raise and appropriate the sum of $6,352,375, and to transfer the sum of $51,547 from the Septic Title V account, and to transfer the sum of $9,656 from the FY '20 free cash amount for a total of $6,413,578 as set forth in the budget document presented to town meeting. So at this time, what we will do is, in the packet that you were given, I will go through and read by department. If anybody would like to put a hold on a particular department, please yell "hold." When we get to the end of that, we'll make a motion to approve everything that has not been held, and we'll vote on those articles, and then we'll come back to the holds.
Can I speak on behalf of making the motion?
Sure.
Now or later?
After we go through. We're going to motion whatever is not held.
Okay.
And then we -- and then we'll approve whatever's not held, and then we come back and we'll do the holds, and then we'll do the total budget altogether.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. So, Town Moderator. Board of Selectmen. Town Administrator. Finance Committee. Hold on Finance Committee? Finance Committee? Okay, so Kathy Olet is holding Finance Committee. Thank you. Finance Committee Reserve Fund. Hold Kathy Olet again. Town Accountant. Town Audit. Board of Assessors. Treasurer Collector. Legal. Technology. Town Clerk. Town Clerk held by Diane Lockwood. Elections. Census and Registrations. Conservation Commission. Planning Board and Zoning. Zoning Board of Appeals. Town Hall. Hold on Town Hall by Kathy Olet. Annual Report. Police Department. Fire Department. Building and Zoning Enforcement. Gas and Plumbing Inspections. Electrical Inspections. Civil Defense. Animal Control. Tree Warden. Is that Tyler? Oh, Alex Mulally? Okay. Sorry. Can't see you with the mask. And Public Safety Communications.
Is that Kathy?
Kathy Olet, okay. MES Grounds Maintenance. Blackstone Valley Tech. Adrian Pettit. Norfolk Agricultural Technical. Tri-County Vocational. Blackstone Millville Regional. Keefe Technical. Highway Department. Is that Brian Mulally? Highway Snow and Ice Removal. Townwide Fuel. Highway Street Sweeping. Storm Water Management. Public Street Lighting. Board of Health. Council on Aging. Veteran Services. Library. Recreation. Memorial Park. Historical Commission. Memorial Day Celebrations. Debt Service. Regional Retirement. Unemployment Insurance. Health Insurance Fringe Benefits on behalf of Employee. Dental Insurance Plan. Medicare Fringe Benefit on behalf of Employees. Other Insurance. Transfers to Other Funds. Is that a hold? That's not money going to the Reserve Fund, no. Aubrey, can you speak? The question is, is there a Reserve Fund Transfer Article or Line Item?
No.
There is not. Can you just -- I'm sorry. Can you come to the microphone over here, just so that everybody can hear? It's right here in front of me. Just watch the cords. And we'll just ask that you -- right over here. It's a truck, I know.
Okay, this is my question--
Can you just state your name and address for the clerk?
Yes, Bonnie Yazek, 70 Prospect Street.
Thank you.
This is my question. I'm concerned about the town employees who did not get a 2% raise, the ones that are appointed by the Selectmen, and it was shot down. I didn't place a hold on all the departments because I'm not sure all of them involved. But what I want to do is to hold the items that would affect the 2% raise for the appointed town employees who didn't get anything, and I'd like to take it out of Reserve Fund Transfer.
Okay, so you would have had to held each individual line item as we went through.
Well, that's why I'm asking you. You haven't closed it down now. Can you do it? I wasn't aware of that. I was looking for the Reserve Fund Transfer Line Item.
Okay. Can you please tell me which line you would like to hold? I will revisit it, but this is not normally how we do this.
Okay, and I know it isn't, but anyways, I won't get into how I feel about it. So I guess I'm going to ask the Finance Committee, Aubrey. I don't know all the appointments that you guys do. If you could give me a list, I know it's Treasurer Collector, I know it's Assessor, it's probably Building, but I don't know all of the departments that--
Yes, so Finance Committee does not do appointments.
How about Selectmen? Can you guys--
So the Board of Selectmen, some are appointed and some are elected. So in order -- I mean, you get three minutes to come up and speak. You have to come prepared to the meeting. That's why we have the public hearing, and we pass out the documents.
Exactly, and I've read everything, Jackie, and I've been very involved with it from my house, but I guess, being a different request, I was just thinking of holding the Reserve Fund Line Item that I thought I could and transfer it into the correct departments.
No. The departments would need to be held.
And I have asked for that information online, and I have not received it.
Okay. Thank you. Did you wish to speak, sir, too? No? Okay. Okay, so at this time, I'd be looking for a motion to approve the line items in the budget that were not held. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
So moved by Aubrey. Is there a second? Is that Brian? Can't tell with these masks. Second by Brian Pacheco. So at this time, all those in favor of moving the budget line items that were not held, please raise your card and vote aye. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your card. Okay, it passes. So at this time, we'll go back to the budget line items that were held, the first of which being Town Administrator -- excuse me, Finance Committee, Kathy Olet. And as a reminder, when you come up, you'll have three minutes to speak. Make your motion as to what you'd like to amend it to. We'll call for a second. If it gets seconded, then you get your three minutes to speak.
Jackie, I'm sorry. Can I just ask a form of order? I just, if we're going to be voting on amendments, I feel that the main motion, the information that I have, might be helpful to people as they decide whether or not to vote on amendments.
So you'd like to do your presentation before we go back?
I just think if we're amending things, then my presentation isn't really--
Absolutely.
--valuable.
Yep, so at this time, before we go back to the amended articles, I would like Finance Committee to take five minutes to go ahead and do their presentation based on the budget. Thank you for that reminder, Aubrey.
Sure. So the budget that Jackie just read through, and just as a reminder, when we vote on the line items, we're voting for the department's line items. We're not voting for the specific sub-detail that's included within the department's budget. So what that means is when a department budget gets included, that department has the discretion to use those funds as they see fit to run their department. The budget that we have here tonight has evolved over the course of the past six months and is a product of our many conversations and deliberations together as a board and also with town officials. We have spent many hours reading, researching, and participating in conversations with the Association of Town Finance Committees and the Massachusetts Municipal Association. When we first discussed the budget for FY '21 back in January, we had agreed to a set of guidelines together with our Town Administrator and the Board of Selectmen. The guidelines allowed for modest increases to our salary lines and our expenses lines and in order to align with the overall financial state of affairs for Millville. We were optimistic with the guidelines that were set forth, and the departments, for the most part, proposed budgets that fit within the guidance. All around, we were feeling comfortable with the way the town's budget was shaping up. It is important to note that the guidelines were put together based on an overall expectation of what our town revenue would look like for fiscal year '21. Notably, Millville's revenue is based on a couple of key drivers. The first is property taxes, and the second is state aid. Back in January, we were provided a number to anticipate for state aid for fiscal year '21, and that number was $555,000. The world, of course, turned upside down in March of 2020 when the COVID-19 pandemic became a reality. As it became more obvious how impactful COVID-19 would be on all of our lives, we became concerned for our health and well-being first and foremost. As measures were taken to protect our safety, our population began isolating, and jobs, as well as the economy, was severely impacted. Currently, the unemployment rate in Massachusetts is 22%. This was reported in May of 2020. According to the Massachusetts Taxpayers Foundation, with an unemployment rate that high, Massachusetts withholding taxes are projected to decline by $1.9 billion. Shutting down economic activities and the loss of personal income will cost the state $2 billion in sales tax revenues. Non-withholding income taxes and corporate payments are expected to fall by $967 million and $905 million respectively. This is projected to result in a $6 billion loss for FY '21 tax revenues in the state of Massachusetts. This projection notably puts Massachusetts toward the higher end of preliminary estimates of revenue losses among the states in fiscal year 2021. In a bulletin from April 13, 2020, the Division of Local Services notified town officials that they should revisit their FY '20 financial forecast assumptions that may have been made prior to the onset of the pandemic. They warned that cash flow may be severely impacted and recommended that local governments prepare or revisit their FY '20/21 budgets based on the current economic climate. In a bulletin dated just June 2020, the DLS recognized that the normal legislative action on the FY '20/21 state budget has been delayed. DLS committed to basing at least the first two months of fiscal year 2021 on the fiscal year 2020 cherry sheet estimates, at which point they will reassess state aid in conjunction with the FY '21 legislative budget process. What does all this mean? We know that the state of Massachusetts is likely to incur an extremely large revenue shortfall as compared with its projections pre-COVID-19. We know that the governor's budget enacted in January 2020, pre-COVID-19, has projected $555,000 in government aid to Millville. We also know that the state recognizes the importance of state aids to its local governments and has admitted to a slowdown in the budget process. With all these things in mind, we can reasonably conclude that state aid to Millville could be significantly less than it is projected to be. We just don't know what that impact will turn out to be. Now, to turn to how this translates to our budget, initially, the budget proposed by the Town Administrator resulted in a deficit of $84,000. That deficit was predicated on receiving $555,000 of government aid to the state of Millville. We now know that government aid will likely be less and will result in a steeper than $84,000 deficit should we have accepted the initial budget proposal. The Finance Committee has sharpened its pencils and derived a budget that is a $9,656 deficit. Again, this is predicated on receiving the full $555,000 of government aid, something that is highly unlikely at this point. We recognize that our deficit this year will be higher than $9,556 once revenue numbers are finalized. Our goal was to be as lean as possible to brace for the fact that this is going to be a difficult year financially and potentially a difficult few years. We urge you to vote in favor of our recommended budget, which we believe is responsible and practical. As far as good news, and there is some, we are not proposing a budget that is flat. Our proposed budget is 3% higher than last year's. We are not proposing we lay off any employees, which is different than what other communities are proposing. In other good news, we are recommending that we recertify our library at an amount that we believe is sustainable and practical. We are also recommending that we meet the request of our schools, BMR, BVT, Tri-County, Norfolk Aggie, and Keefe Tech. This is because we recognize the importance of funding our education in this time of uncertainty to our students. Our job as a Finance Committee is to recommend a budget that is financially responsible. We take our jobs very seriously. We are proud of the decisions that prior town meetings have made to increase our savings and tighten our budget. Those decisions are single-handedly responsible for our ability to weather these kinds of storms. The situation we find ourselves in is historic and unprecedented. With strong leadership and calm decision-making, it is our belief that we will find our way to the other side of this crisis with a sustainable future. Thank you.
Thank you, Aubrey. So at this time-- Thank you. At this time, we'll go back and look at any of the line items that were held. The Finance Committee -- sorry. Yeah, Finance Committee was held by Kathy Olet. So Kathy, if you'd like to go, you can wipe down the microphone.
Sorry.
It's okay. It's part of the fun tonight.
Well, just like clarification on the Finance Committee line item, that doesn't encompass line item 19, is that correct?
Aubrey, is that correct?
That's correct. $135 is our dues for the Finance Committee.
So that's separate from the Reserve Fund?
Yes, that's correct.
All right, so I'd like to rescind my hold--
Okay.
--on line item 18.
So we'd be looking for a motion to approve the Finance Committee budget in the amount of $135. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Made by Aubrey-- Made by Aubrey. Is there a second? Second by Adrian Pettit. Is there any further discussion on that line? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of funding the Finance Committee in the amount of $135, please raise your card. All those opposed, please raise your card. The motion passes, and I declare it unanimous. The next line item that was held was line 20, the Finance Committee Reserve Fund Transfer. Kathy? You don't even have to wipe the microphone this time.
I know, right?
Did we get your address for the record?
382 Chestnut Hill Road.
Thank you.
I'd like to reduce this line item by $5,600 to $29,500.
So there's a motion been made to reduce the line by $5,600 to $29,400. Is there a second?
Second.
I'm sorry, who made the second? Aubrey? Okay, and would you like a few minutes to explain?
Sure. The reason I'm reducing this line item is it gives us leeway to move those funds into other line items without increasing the budget's bottom line. So we're just shifting money from one line item to the next, and we're not increasing the budget. And I quote from Aubrey Brono, Bueno, excuse me, that she, "Please recommend lowering FinCom reserves." I would second it, as she did.
I didn't.
So thank you, Aubrey. And to paraphrase from Gary Gill, he also said that he vetoed the Town Administrator increasing this budget. So I feel that we can use this money to fund other line items.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on this? Aubrey?
Sure. Just in case anyone doesn't know, the Reserve Fund is, is set aside for emergencies that happen for the town across the year. So, for example, last year, the HVAC system in the police station went, and so the chief came to us asking for replacement. It was a Board of Health, like, a state, you know, it was an emergency at the time. We approved the expense. There was another expense for an insurance item that couldn't wait for a town meeting. They came to, you know, the treasurer came to us, asked for a Reserve Fund transfer. We approved it. We have made it clear that our expectation on the Finance Committee Reserve Fund is it is for emergency purposes only. It is not to fix budgets. So to the extent that it has lessened and an emergency comes up, if there is not enough in the Finance Committee Reserve Fund to cover that emergency, we would be called to a special town meeting to vote on, on funding for that emergency.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Anybody else wish to speak? Nobody else would like to speak, so I'll let Kathy do it again. Go ahead, Kathy.
I just ask Aubrey, then why would you recommend lowering the Reserve Fund if you don't feel we should?
I didn't say I didn't, I didn't say I didn't feel. We've kept the Finance Committee Reserve Fund stable over the past several years. Last year, we did use all of it. To be honest with you, I was unhappy that we used all of it and then actually needed more of it, because I think that budgeting should be done in environments like this with as many people voicing their opinions and voting as possible. So to the extent that we have a lower Finance Committee Reserve Fund, we would just come to a setting like this to make decisions, and that, for me, is, is fine.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, oop, yes, Mr. Finn. Can wipe your microphone there.
Jerry Finn, 47 Grove Street. Looking back in the history about, all the way back into 10 years back, actually, I noticed the Reserve Fund has been at $35,000 some years, some years less. But I did notice in years, there was numbers of years that it was never even used. So I'm not saying that it's not right to have it. I think you have to have that emergency fund. The amount of it, though, I know was originally, I think, the TA had said he wanted to increase that by $15,000. There was a question I posed on, said, geez, looking back at history, you hadn't spent more than $15,000 in the last four, five years before last year. And then I think there was a reduction on that, if I'm not ac, if I'm accurate, and that reduction actually went back to where it is now, which is 35, which is baseline where it's been going backwards. Is that fair?
Yeah, I can only speak too, since I've been on the Finance Committee the past couple of years, but...
Yeah, the other information I got was right out of the town books that I keep every year, so I can check and look and see what has been happening on that, so I can get a trend line on it, because I think it's important to know what the trends are. If this thing goes wildly up and down, you've got to have a better trend line. That wasn't the case. Most of the time, it never got used. I hope that if we don't have any more emergencies, that some of that would be able to be used for another effect, and I'm sure that's what Kathy was talking about.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Finn. Is there anybody else who would wish to speak on this? Wipe it down.
Sorry. I apologize. So, quick question on the Reserve Fund. If we do not use those funds in this coming fiscal year, would that money then go into the free cash of the next fiscal year?
Aubrey?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I'm going to move the amendment. So at this time, the Finance Committee had recommended a budget of this line item for $35,000. There's an amendment that we'll vote on to reduce it by $5,600, making the line item $29,400. All those in favor of the Finance Committee Reserve Fund in the amount of $29,400, please raise your card.
Thank you.
All those opposed, please raise your card. The amendment passes. Because the amendment passes, we do not have to go back and vote on the regular budget. The next line item that was held was the Town Clerk by Diane Lockwood.
Diane Lockwood, 15 Oak Street, and also Town Clerk. I am asking to increase my budget for the clerk administrative salaries. I'm asking for $6,240 for the year, which would give me an assistant town clerk to work eight hours a week. I know that everybody's trying to cut the budgets and, but my town, my assistant town clerk was taken away two years ago. I'm having a very difficult time keeping up, impossible, actually. And we've had an assistant town clerk since the 1980s at least. I haven't had time to go back and check further than that. And this is the first time, with all of the work that has been piling up on town clerks over the course of the last 10 years, I find it absolutely impossible to keep up, so I'm asking for $6,240 to be taken out of free cash and put into my budget so I could get eight hours a week of help. Thank you.
So there's been an amendment made to increase the Town Clerk line item from $49,184, increased by $6,240, for a new total of $55,424. Is there a second?
Second.
Is that Kathy Olet made a second? Is there any further discussion?
Pat Finn, 47 Grove Street. I'm a registrar with the town, and I've had quite a few occasions to go into town hall since I'm recently retired to help Diane on various projects and things that she just can't get done during her normal hours. And I know she does a lot more than her normal hours as well. There are some things that only a registrar or town clerk can do on the town computer, so volunteer hours don't help. And I know she does have some volunteers that do come in and do collating and copying and so forth. But if you can go in and watch what she does during the day and the limited time that she has, with all of the interruptions that she has, every time somebody comes through the door and needs something signed, something stamped, something, a dog license, she answers the phones when nobody else is available to answer it, people push the button for Town Clerk. She can't get it done. And in order to make this town function, we have to have some, some jobs that need, they need to be done. I mean, we have census. She couldn't get the census done. Every time anybody made one change on their census form, and we had a really good response to the census this year for the town, but every single change had to go into the main computer and be changed on the state computer. Then the paperwork had to be collated and copied and saved for the state and then sent to, sent with forms to the state. It's an impossible job without giving her some kind of help. It was really just an impossible job. You can't keep everything that she does going, and she can't get it all done. She gets complaints because she can't get a dog license out because she's working on something else. So there are priorities, but there are things that need to be done. I'm just saying, I've been there, I've had the opportunity to volunteer before the town hall closed, and it, it's impossible to do what she has to do and the time that she has to do it without an assistant.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak on the amendment? Gary? Yes, please. Making you guys work tonight, sorry.
Hello, my name is Gary Gill. I live at 100 Berthel Way. I'm also on the Finance Committee, as you can see. I felt that this time, I want to say this statement and just say it once, because we're about to go through all the line items that have been held, and in each and every case, the person who held that line item is probably have, gonna have a pretty good argument for why that line item is the one that needs to be increased. Okay? The Finance Committee, because of what we're seeing at the state level, because of what we're seeing with other towns, went through this budget, and we reduced it by approximately $70,000. In order to be conservative and prepare for this fall, when it's most likely the wall will be back here again, once we find what the actual fallout is from the state budget to approve adjustments to the budget, we're hopeful that the numbers come back better. If we get the state aid that was originally promised, then we can revisit things in a positive direction as we originally intended back in January. But it's also very possible that we're going to be revisiting at a lower number. And so I would ask everyone in this audience, how many of you received pay increases this year? Well, you're lucky. How many of you have been laid off or been furloughed, or know someone who's been laid off or been furloughed? So just please keep that in mind as you start talking about pay increases at this point in time when there's so much uncertainty that the state hasn't even finished their budget yet. If it wasn't for the school system, I can reasonably suggest that the Finance Committee would be recommending that we're not here tonight. We're not passing the budget. We're going into a 1/12 budget that's built on what we were, our spending rate from last year. The only reason we're not recommending that is because of our partnership with Blackstone with the BMR school system. That's it. So, you know, these are tough times for everyone, and to, to ignore it, to stick our heads in the ground, or to only look at sort of your little piece of the budget and not see the bigger picture, is what leads us down a path of financial ruin. And I don't want to overstate it, because it's not just this year. Aubrey spoke about it in the past, it's, this impact is going to be felt for years to come. So I would encourage you to think very, very carefully about proposing, or voting for any increases. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak on the amendment? Yes?
Now that I messed up the other one, I want to, I just want to talk on this one. I appreciate the Finance Committee, and I appreciate the Board of Selectmen. What you guys do is, there's no rewards for it, and you've done a great job. But I have this thing with town employees, maybe because I was one for 29 years. But in this town, it's always been the few town employees that are appointed by the Selectmen that don't get anything. So over years of frustration, I am saying to you guys, when the town clerk can't get the stuff done, maybe some of it has penalties, what do you suggest? That she just keep, and I know where you're coming from, but you're not talking about a lot of money for the few salaries, the $2,000 to pay the, the appointments of the different boards that didn't get their 2%, and what, what is being asked for by the town clerk. I just would like everyone to please think about it, okay? I, I borrow, I know how important stabilization fund is, I always rooted for that, but sometimes you need to take a look at people, human people, and realize that every other single department, except for the appointed ones, get, they get as much as 7% if they're getting step increases. So I just want you all to be aware of that. Send my peace, and I want to thank all of you again. I know you do a great job. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak on the amendment? Paul Olet, and then Jennifer Gill. I know it's tough, and we need to remember, we're voting on the Town Clerk, so let's try to keep comments to this line item. And I know it's hard not to generalize and talk about all of these positions together, but right now, the article that we're voting on is the amendment to the Town Clerk line.
Yep. The Paul Olet, 382 Chestnut Hill Road. The, the Town Clerk is asking to have the money transferred from free cash. Could you please enlighten us as to what our free cash number is for this year?
Certainly. Finance Committee, can you please provide the balance in the free cash, please?
Yes.
I'd also like to know the stabilization balance while you're at it.
Sure. $906,529 is the available free cash, but for the snow and ice deficit of $42,000, which we just had, taken out of that. And then the stabilization, I believe that's in the handout everyone got.
There is a handout at the back with all of the different various stabilization accounts and their balances.
And I just wanted it to be vocalized, because somebody might not have gone all the way through.
Thank you.
General stabilization is $400,639. Public safety stabilization is $254,732. Capital stabilization is $100,000, and we have several articles that are proposing a transfer from these various stabilization funds for capital items that are later in the warrant.
Okay. Now, the Town Clerk is saying that with the funds that she has, she's not able to get her work done. So I would ask you and, and everybody here to think about, what is the town's business? The town's business is to serve the people of the community using town employees and advisory committees and such, is to serve the town employees. Our business is not to bolster our savings account. We are essentially a nonprofit service organization. Nonprofit organizations, as I'm sure all of you smart people over here know, are responsible for taking that whatever they make in profit and dumping it back into their, into their business, to a certain extent. Doesn't mean they don't make money. It means that they can't take payouts and dividends and all that stuff. I don't, I don't need to know the minutia of that. But the fact of the matter is, by taking funds away from the departments that are responsible or not funding properly, the departments that are responsible for providing services to the townspeople, we are doing a disservice to the people of this town. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer Gill, did you wish to speak? Oh, actually, yeah, you have your mic, you can speak from there.
Jennifer Gill, that's me, because no one can see my mouth moving. And I live at 100 Berthel Way, and Gary is my husband, just to put that out there. So the one thing that I just wanted everyone to note is that if you heard, I just want to note that Aubrey mentioned that the state is level funding budgets right now, and the fact that we have any increases at all across the board is pretty unbelievable. It's really remarkable what we're looking at with a budget with no layoffs, no positions eliminated, when just a few short years ago, we were looking at an override of over $1 million. We have made tremendous progress. Please, let's not undo that progress tonight. We're not saying not ever, just not tonight. Let's wait and see what we get from the town and make a completely informed decision. We don't have enough pieces of the data to make that decision. The state themselves is recommending level funding, so let's please remember that. And I'll say please when we're And I'll say please when we're done. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak? Aubrey?
Sure. I, I just wanted to talk to the idea of using free cash to balance a budget, and, you know, we've talked about this in the past. There's a couple of things this year, um, that are unique. One is we don't know how much free cash we will need to balance the budget that is before you today. That's the first thing, because we don't know what the final revenue numbers are going to look like. The second point here is that the past couple of years have been what we, what we are calling free cash outliers. There were events that happened which caused our free cash to be higher than normal. In years past, we were funding the budget year after year after year using one-time funds and free cash, and it got us in a really difficult spot. And I remember particularly one day when I was brand new to the Finance Committee, it was in June of 2018, and I was sitting in a joint meeting with Blackstone, Millville, the school committee for BMI, and the DLS representatives, and the question by the then Finance Committee Chairperson was, what happens if we get to December and we cannot pay our bills? What happens then? And I remember thinking, that's a really scary question. And then the answer was even scarier because the state said, that would be unprecedented, it would be some type of receivership. And I remember thinking, okay, this is alarming. We're in a really bad spot right now. Why are we in a bad spot? Because we are using one-time funds year after year after year to balance a budget. Here we are, just two years later. We have healthy stabilization accounts, which were not even close to the balances they were two years ago, and we have a free cash amount that is a larger amount than normal because of particular things that have happened in the town over the past couple of years. If we continue to fund our budget using free cash, that deficit number we talk about, which right now in the Finance Committee's budget is about $10,000, it grows and grows and grows over time, and your free cash amounts get smaller and smaller and smaller because that's how the math works, and you're simply unable to pay your bills. So we have been very, um, pointed about how we are recommending to do things, and it's not to balance a budget using free cash or stabilization, and that has been historically a message that, you know, leadership could get around.
Thank you. Is there anybody who wishes? Yes.
Pam Dean Kobetish from 43 Central Street here in Millville, and, um, I just wanted, first of all, say, Aubrey, I think you've done a remarkable job as being Chairperson of your board, and I know how hard your board has worked, and I personally thank you, but I just thought of something. What if we meet our town clerk halfway? She's asking for six hours, six thousand, what?
Eight hours.
Eight hours a week for $6,000 or $6,200. It's a tiny, tiny bit. I know those tiny bits add up, but what if we meet her halfway and give her four hours? At least it's something. The poor girl works herself ragged, and I know we all know that, it's no secret, but a town clerk doesn't work just her hours or his hours, they work double time. And I know for a fact she does, and I know most of you understand that, and I'm just saying, can we meet her halfway?
So there's an amendment on the floor at this point that we would vote on, um, and that, or unless somebody wants to make a subsequent amendment, um... Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, I need the question.
So there's been a motion made to move the question. Is there a second, or do you want to allow further discussion? There's a second to move. Are there seven people who will raise to move the question? We're gonna move the question. So we're voting right now on an amendment to the town clerk's recommended budget. It was forty-nine thousand one hundred and eighty-four dollars. The amendment was to increase by six thousand two hundred and forty dollars for a total of fifty-five thousand four hundred and twenty-four dollars, with the increase coming from free cash. All those in favor, please raise your cards. All those opposed, please raise your card. The amendment passes. The next line item that was held was the town hall budget held by Kathy Olet. The original proposed amount was a hundred and forty-eight thousand five hundred and seventy-two dollars.
I would like to make a motion to increase the town hall budget, line item 130, by $3,000, coming from the Finance Committee Reserve Fund, line item 19, that was just reduced, by $5,600.
Okay, so there's been a motion made to increase the town hall budget by $3,000, up to the new amount of one hundred and fifty-one thousand five hundred and seventy-two dollars, with the difference coming from the savings of the Finance Committee Reserve Fund that we voted. Is there a second? Second by Bonnie Yasik. Kathy, would you like to talk about the article?
Sure. Um, this $3,000 would be used by the town hall, well, you said they can use it in any way they wish, correct?
It, it would go into...
The department.
Correct, into the department, so they can use it between...
My suggestion would be to give the town employees their 2% raise.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Yes, Rich.
Uh, looking at the line items for the town hall, I believe it's 123 through 129.
It includes the previous page as well, Rich.
Is there a previous page?
It starts on page 11, uh, number, line item 116.
Got it? That's it?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Jennifer Gill?
Jennifer Gill, 100 Berthelit Way. I guess I just wanted to remind everyone, this onesie twosie is gonna add up, and all the progress that we made will be lost. And again, um, I just want to stress that we're not saying not ever, just not now. Let us do a little bit of research. I don't know if you remember at the ta, the town meeting in the fall, there was a police car, and I said, let's not vote on this now, just give me a chance to put together a plan, and tonight we'll be voting on that. Just let us look into this a little more, get more information, and figure out exactly what we can do. We just don't know right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else other than Kathy who... Go ahead, Aubrey.
I just wanted to point out on this one that, um, initially on the TA's recommended 2021 budget, it was sixty-four thousand eight hundred and thirty-one, so it was only in, it would, would have been an increase of $1,271, so I'm just noting that here, you know, that's above and beyond the recommendation even initially to increase by $3,000.
Thank you. Adrian? Sorry. Yeah.
I just want to let people know that, um, there are other people in town whose salaries are not going to increase by the suggested 2%, because not all departments that had those suggested increases were held. So this would be specific to one department and wouldn't be consistently applied amongst all the salary increase requests that came through. I, you know, I just want people to be aware of that. I've said enough about salaries in the meeting, so...
Thank you. Is there anybody else who hasn't spoken yet who would like to speak to this article? No? Go ahead, Kathy, you can speak again.
I would just like to remind people that this is not an increase to the budget, because the money is coming from the Finance Committee Reserve Fund that we just reduced by over $5,000. It doesn't necessarily have to go to town hall increases, it's just going to the town hall line item, and whoever is in charge of that department may do with it as they need or see fit.
Thank you. Is there anybody else wishing to speak? Seeing none, I'm going to move the question. So at this point, we're voting on an amendment to increase the town hall budget line, originally proposed at one hundred and forty-eight thousand five hundred and seventy-two dollars, increased by three thousand to an amount of one hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars, uh, sorry, excuse me, one hundred and fifty-one thousand five hundred and seventy-two dollars. All those in favor, please raise your card. All those opposed, please raise your card. The amendment fails, so at this time we'll go back, and I'd be looking for a motion for the original budget in the amount of one hundred and forty-eight thousand five hundred and seventy-two dollars. Is there a motion? Moved by Adrian Pettit. Is there a second? Second. Second by Aubrey. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. All those opposed, please raise your cards. The motion passes. The next line item that was held was the tree warden, held by Alex Mulally.
Selectwoman Gill kept saying they wanted to level fund the budget, and my budget was cut nearly $6,500. So I'm not looking for an increase or anything, but if I could just get what I had last year, that'd be awesome, add a free cash if possible.
Okay, so, can you...
Can I?
Make it a, make it a motion?
Looking for a motion, uh, transfer $6,500 out of free cash to line item 241.
For a total of $19,000 in the line?
Correct. Do I have to break that down specifically per line?
Nope, nope, that's fine. Um, is there a second? So there's been a motion made to increase the tree warden budget from $12,500, increase it by $6,500 for a total of $19,000. Is there a second? Second. Sorry, I can't see you.
Key's marked here.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Aubrey?
I can just give a little bit of context on this one. So, um, we discussed this department in detail at our Finance Committee, um, meeting when we went through the budget, but, um, what we were doing here is, if you look back on your, um, on your budgets from, you know, historically, 2016 through 2020, we had pretty low tree warden expenses in 2016 and 2017. 2018, there was an increase to $16,000. And then in 2019, we had, if people remember, the gypsy moth infestation, which was causing hat, wreaking havoc to trees. Um, so our recommended budget of 12,5 was to come more in line with some of the historical budgets, um, that we had seen, and it was also a department that we said, look, if we get to the fall and we believe that we truly need more to cover that particular department's line, this can be one of those lines that we revisit. So, um, that was kind of our approach in how we got to the 12,5.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion?
If the tree warden happens to run out of money between now and, and September, where we know more about the reserve fund and, and what the state's gonna give us, is it not possible to, um, provide him with additional funds from the reserve?
That would be possible, so if there was an emergency, like we needed to take down more trees for an emergency purpose, and there was money left in our Finance Committee Reserve Fund, we would, that would be a, a use that we could, um, we could use.
So, like, uh, since this is a hurricane season, if a hurricane happens between now and September, and he has to cut a lot of trees, if he needs the money, then Finance Committee can provide him with the additional funds from the reserve.
If it was unexpected and extraordinary, which are the two, um, rubrics to using the Finance Committee Reserve Fund, I would take a hurricane to meet both of those, and there's money in the reserve fund, then we could, we could visit that.
Thank you. Is there anybody else wishing to speak that hasn't spoken? Nope. Okay, go ahead.
Alex Mulally, 66 Central Street. Um, so, am I able to move money around within this budget freely for stipends, police details, and other expenses if I so wish, if this gets failed?
So I believe we, actually, I'm gonna defer that to Finance Committee. Would you like to respond to that, or do you want to?
I mean, I would like input from legal counsel. My expectation was yes. I think my follow-up question would be, are you looking for additional money for a stipend or for tree expenses that you anticipate?
I would like to have it level funded as last year, as there's still plenty of trees to be taken down from said gypsy moths. I would like to do more tree work with it, but I still like to get paid on the side from it, 'cause I'm out at 2:00 in the morning cutting trees, hurricanes, weekends, random times, and it's just a little extra money. I know everyone needs it, but...
So I believe we talked about this at a previous meeting, and, uh, Peter, can you comment this position? Is there a difference when it's, uh, elected versus appointed?
Counsel, sorry, but, uh, we are approving the total budget line item.
We're approving the tota, total budget line item, but I, I guess we'll ask counsel...
It's elected?
It's an elected position, so I believe we discussed this at a previous meeting, that there's a difference between elected versus appointed.
Town meeting passes the compensation for an elected official. You're to change that during the year, you have to come back.
So counsel's recommendation is, once the compensation is solidified by a vote at this meeting, in order to change the compensation for an elected official, it would require another town meeting vote. So the breakdown that is in here, compensation, because this is an elected position, is at, it's recommended at zero, so that would rec, that would stay at zero. That would stay at zero. That's correct. Is there any additional questions?
Do I make another motion now to move within the line item?
Well, so let's clarify, you've made an amendment to increase in the amount of $6,500. How would you like that $6,500 broken out? Can we do that?
Sorry. I would like $1,000 in line 238, and the rest in line 240. That's how I would like that to read out.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Along Fisher Street, there are some huge oak trees that have been devastated by the gypsy moths. Right in the front of my house, there's a tree that's about, oh, probably 90 to 100 feet tall.
feet tall. There are two limbs there that, if they don't come down soon, they're going to come down and wreak havoc on that street. I would, I would like to have you justify the expense that the Tree Warden is proposing. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak on this? Okay, seeing no one. There is an amendment that we'll vote on to increase the Tree Warden total budget. It'll be an increase to line 238, Tree Warden Stipend, which is currently recommended at zero, increased to $1,000. Line 239, Tree Warden Police Details will remain at $2,500, and Tree Warden Other Expenses, recommended at $10,000, is being, is being proposed at $15,500 for a new total budget of $19,000. All those in favor of this amendment, please raise your card. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your cards. Okay, so the amendment fails. At this time, we'll go back and we'll vote on the original budget as proposed, so is there a motion to approve the Tree Warden Budget Line per department in the amount of $12,500? So moved. Motion made by Aubrey. Is there a second?
Can I hold that?
We already did hold it.
Can I discuss on this?
That, yep. I'll need a second first. Is there anybody willing to second? Second by Gary Gill. Any discussion? Are you proposing another amendment?
Um, not really. Just a question to you guys in the town. I just got re-elected for, I don't know how many times I've done it, but if I resign tomorrow because this fails and I try and try and get money for my budget, who's going to do it? The highway's strapped for money. They don't have money to pay their own guys the time that they need to put in. Who's going to come out and cut the trees? You're not going to find a tree company to come out and cut the trees when they fall. I would just like an explanation where you think it would go. Thank you.
Thank you. So, it's an elected position, so I'm looking at council that it would be vacant until our next election in the spring, and then somebody hopefully pulls papers and runs for it and would be elected.
So, who would oversee it if a tree comes down?
It would be an unfilled, it would be an unfilled position until the next election. So, if there were an emergency, it would be up to the Board of Selectmen and Town Administrator to deal with the emergency. Adrian?
So, this is Adrian Pettit, 442 Chestnut Hill Road, citizen of Millville. I just, before we vote on this again, I would recommend or like to amend line 238 to add $1,000, which would be offset by the reduction that was already taken from the Finance Committee Reserve, and see if people will vote on that. For a total of $13,500.
Okay, so there's been an amendment made to increase line 238, the Tree Warden Stipend, from the recommended amount of zero up to $1,000, which brings the total Tree Warden expenses from $12,500 to $13,500. Is there a second? Kathy Olet gets a second. Is there any discussion on increasing by $1,000? Yes, sir.
I was once a Tree Warden in town, too. I worked a bottle tree, and at that time, it was mass electric, so I don't know, I haven't seen any electric trucks coming in here with teams clearing the trees. Some of these trees are over wires, like one in front of my house, it's over the wires. I already made a call of the arborist. Tree Warden should be calling the arborist. Could be where Leo Therion could be over the wires. They could be taking care of those stuff, so I just want you to think about that.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak? Okay, so at this time, we're going to vote on an amendment to increase the Tree Warden Stipend from the recommended amount of zero to $1,000, which increases the overall Tree Warden budget from $12,500 to $13,500. All those in favor, please raise your card. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your card. The amendment passes. The next line item that was held was Public Safety Communications by Kathy Olet.
I'd like to make a motion to increase the Public Safety Communications line item by $800, funded from the FinCom Reserve Fund item, line item 19.
Okay, so there's a motion, an amendment made to increase the budget from the amount of $66,650, increased by $800, to a new amount of $67,450.
Correct.
And the amount will be coming from the Finance Committee Reserve Fund savings.
And this will not increase the budget again, it's just coming from another line item.
Is there a second? Second, Bonnie Yasek. Is there, would you like to talk about it?
Sure. Again, it is within the department's manager to use those funds as they see fit. I'm proposing that the Communications Clerk salary increases by an $800 a year.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on this? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. So, we're voting on an amendment to increase the Public Safety Communications Department from the originally proposed $66,650, an increase of $800, for a total of $67,450, and the difference coming from the Finance Committee Reserve Fund savings from an earlier vote. All those in favor, please raise your card. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your card. So, the amendment fails. This time, we'll go back to the original budget. Is there a motion to fund the line, the department, in the amount of $66,650? So moved. Motion made by Aubrey. Is there a second? Second by Adrian. Is there any further discussion on this? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of funding Public Safety Communications in the amount of $66,650, please raise your card. All those opposed, please raise your card. The motion passes. The next line item held was the Blackstone Valley Tech Budget, held by Adrian Pettit in the amount of $318,770.
Adrian Pettit, 442 Chestnut Hill Road. I think that this is an important thing for people to understand, is the stipends that are paid to our school committee members. The Blackstone Valley Vocational School assesses the educational expenses without any assumption or payment for stipends to the school committee member. If you look at line item 267 for Blackstone Millville Regional, that line item includes stipends to be paid to the school committee members for Blackstone Millville Regional School District, and so I'm proposing that we increase line item 255, Blackstone Valley Vocational Committee Stipend, to $1,500, funded out of free cash, to be consistent with how we pay our school committee members across the towns. You know, I've done some research on this, because I think fundamentally, it's inequitable to be paying a stipend to a school committee member for BMR, but not be paying it for BBT. Because this line item isn't specifically broken out, and it's part of the assessment for BMR's assessment, it wasn't something that Millville got rid of in 2019 and 2020, and I think just through the service of the Finance Committee, I was able to kind of drill down and understand more what was happening, and I just don't think it's equitable, so therefore, I think that the town of Millville at least should have a vote on whether or not they believe that we should be paying the stipend for BBT, inconsistent with the stipend that's paid to the school committee members through BMR.
Thank you. So, there's been a motion made to increase the line for Blackstone Valley Tech from $318,770 by $1,500 for a new total of $320,270, with the additional $1,500 coming from free cash. Is there a second? Second by Kathy Olet. Is there any further discussion on this? Jennifer Gill.
Jennifer Gill, 100 Berthalet Way. So, although I do agree that it's inequitable between the school and Blackstone Valley Tech, I guess it is a slippery slope, slope, because we have many, many other stipends that we're not paying at this time. So, then it's, you know, oh, so the school gets stipends, if you're in education, you get stipends, but everybody else doesn't. So, although it might be equitable between BBT and BMR school committees, it's not equitable across everybody else who volunteers their time for the town. So, I would rather see us do something like eliminate stipends for BMR, the school committee, rather than add one for someone else. I think that's more fair, because right now, no one's getting stipends except school committee. So, someone else who's on, I don't know, Conservation Committee or something else might think, "Why am I not getting my stipend? It's just for the school." So, I think to be equitable, we should have no stipends, but in this case, we can't eliminate the one for BMR. But I do think we should have no stipends, just to keep it fair among all the other people who volunteer their time for the town. Thanks.
Thank you. Sure.
Paul Bono, 13 Paullet Way. Just directed to Adrian. Wouldn't the equitable way to handle this, without really discussing the worthiness of the number itself, you kind of talked about how the BMR stipend is apportioned. Wouldn't the way to do that, to take the BBT number and just break out from that BBT number, the $1,500 that you're seeking, and apportion that to a stipend?
I guess, I'm sorry, Paul, I don't understand.
Well, wouldn't there be an equitable way to handle this, which is to take, if BMR's stipend is broken out, we don't have the way to vote on it. Wouldn't there be an amendment that could be proposed to vote on it, so that the stipend is included and BBT can pay out their stipend based on their total numbers?
So, you're recommending including it in line 256 as, in the entire BV, BBT budget, as opposed to breaking it out and paying it from our town?
I'm not certain we can do that. I'm saying, wouldn't the equitable way to handle that be some sort of bylaw or school committee policy change? Wouldn't that be something that, if you were trying, if the argument is equitability, right, being equitable, wouldn't the way to handle that be to make sure the schools apportion those stipends in the same way? And not to sit here and bicker about where the money comes from? Just let the school committee deal with it in the same way? That's the equitable way to handle it, based on the rationale that was presented. Do we agree?
Do you want me to comment?
Well, I mean, I just wanted to make that on the record very clear.
So, are you done with your comments?
Yes, because that can't be done here, if I understand that correctly, right?
Okay.
Is that correct? Is that a town council question?
We cannot adjust the BBT assessment number.
Correct.
Correct.
Right.
Thank you.
We need to handle it in a different forum.
Right, which would be line 255, the stipend. Thank you. Jerry, did you want to get up and speak, and then?
I'd like to say, I like to believe in fair, equitable, and consistent is the way to look at things. There's two delivery education systems here that we're very proud of in this town. That's the BMR, which is predominantly academic, and you've got a BBT, which is academic as well as vocational training. They're, they're very similar, and they're very distinct. If you look at the, who represents the four in the BMR, you have four representatives here that are elected and are representatives from Millville to the BMR side. You've got four people, additional people, there's eight total in Blackstone, that are elected by the Blackstone people and are in the total of the eight that take care of BMR. At the same timeframe, you've got one person, one position, that represents BBT, and that one position of BBT represents and is elected at large for 13 towns. But we're both really kind of similar. We have multiple towns. You've got Blackstone with Blackstone and Millville. You've got, when you take a look at the Valley Tech, you've got 13 towns, so we're multiple We requested and asked for a 3% increase. TA asked us to please take a look at that. He recognizes schools were a different type of animal. They are not, they are not a town budget. Neither is Keith Tech, neither is Vocational Tech, Norfolk Aggie. Those aren't, those aren't the town budgets where they come from. When we talk about those particular type of requests, those are ones that state says we have to fund. We don't have a choice with that. So, they're similar, both, but another town department. The requested 3%, when the TA asked us of that, I'm happy to say that both schools similarly responded. BMR came in at a 1.42% increase. Now, that's a damn nice move that they've made there.
Jerry, let's make sure we're focusing on the stipend. You've got about 30, 30 seconds left.
Indeed, $45,000, $45,000 increase. The BBT, there was a decrease. We're asking for a decrease in the buzz of $29,100, an 8.1% decrease. The real question here is the citizens of Blackstone and Millville. What I'm asking is, if, if it's good enough for the Blackstone people who voted on May 24th, to go ahead and to approve the stipends for the eight people for two towns, I'm asking for your vote to be able to go and to put together the one representative you have for, for Millville. And I think if you look at what Black, what BBT has been able to offer this town, in my services over 30 years, I think I have a right to ask for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on the increase for the stipend? I love the help from the audience, too. You guys are great at pointing and directing me. It's a little different out here, so it's appreciated.
Andrew Allwood, Board of Selectmen, 49 Hill Street. I have a question for the Finance Committee. If we were to approve this stipend, would this affect our retirement budgeting as well?
So, is that a question that the Finance Committee, Aubrey, you would like, or do you want to push that to Town Administrator?
Push it to Town Administrator.
So, it's not a, it's not a requirement for that type of funding?
So, there would be no retirement funds from the town that we'd have to pay?
It would not be eligible for that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other further discussion?
Norman Gamash, 31 Hockness Road. We reduced the Finance Committee Reserve Fund by $6,600. $5,600. We haven't used all of that $5,000 anywhere else so far in the budget. What I have is a problem using the reserve fund to fund anything in our budget. If we've already, you know, earmarked this money to be in our budget, then why not use the money that was taken out of that reserve account? And use that to fund this stipend, as opposed to the reserve fund? Therefore, I would propose an amendment if...
reserve fund? Therefore, I would propose an amendment if, you know, to provide the stipend that's been requested out of that money that was taken out of the Finance Committee Reserve Fund as opposed to the reserve, the cash, or free cash or reserve.
You tested me. So, there's been an amendment to the amendment to increase the line 258 Blackstone Valley Tech from $318,770 that's originally requested, an increase of $1,500 for a new budget of $320,270 with this time the $1,500 coming from the Finance Committee Reserve Fund savings that we voted on earlier. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Kathy Olet. Is there any further discussion on the amendment to the amendment?
Kathy, it's not the 258, I accept.
Adrienne is accepted.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so at this time, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of increasing the line to a new total of $320,270 with the $1,500 increase to the Blackstone Valley Tech line, with the increase coming from the Finance Committee's Reserve Fund savings voted on earlier, please hold your card.
I just want to make sure that we're documenting that it's going to the 255 for the stipends since it's an elective position.
It will be going to line 255, the Blackstone Valley Vocational Committee stipend because it is the stipend was the request. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your cards. The amendment passes, and since that passes, we no longer have to go back and vote the original line. Okay, the next department that was held was the Highway Department by Brian Mulally.
Brian Mulally, 66 Central Street. I am your Highway Surveyor, starting my 10th year on being your Highway Surveyor. I'm just going to start off that, as the Finance Committee had stated, back in January, we started the budget season again. I met with them several times, did some video meetings with them also. I proposed the budget. They were in support of it. Starting with the salaries and stipends, the salaries of the Highway employees have been pretty level funded for many years. What I'm finding that's increasing, and I'm probably one of the only departments that have the majority of minimum wage employees. Over the past three years, minimum wage has gone up over $2.75 an hour. Having multiple employees at minimum wage adds up to losing an employee. So when you say a department isn't getting cut when it's not getting funded, it is getting cut because the state level is rising, but the town's not supporting it. Working with the Finance Committee, I put together projects as they requested, four major projects in the town to complete this fiscal year utilizing Chapter 90 money and utilizing town money that would be approved here at town meeting. I understand the pandemic that we're in. The Finance Committee has given me their word that they want to work with me if I show them the projects, along with the Board of Selectmen, which I feel I have done. We have Fisher Street that needs total reconstruction. We have Grove Street that needs total reconstruction. And we have a culvert on Hill Street and a culvert on Thayer Street, which is our main throughway to this elementary school, that are failing dramatically. It cannot be done with just the state Chapter 90 money. They give us between $100 and $120,000 a year. You can't do much work with that money. The only way we're going to be able to do any is by saving that money year after year and getting the town to back us with taxpayer money. If you look on the back page, right before the last page, you've got a breakdown in there, public work supplies. You go back six years. My budget's actually showing less this year than it was six years ago, using this year. I know that street lighting is within there, and we all know we don't have streetlights, but it still doesn't reflect everything else from year after year. I've been doing this, as I said, now, starting my 10th year, and getting support from the town to help fix these roads has been very minimal. With that being said, I want to give the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen the benefit of the doubt and move forward from here until September, and hopefully, they can figure out how to fund to help repair our roads because they are falling apart faster than we're allowing. Thank you.
Thank you. So Brian, at this time, you are not proposing an amendment to the budget?
I'm not.
Thank you. So the Highway Department budget, as recommended by the Finance Committee, is $143,130. Is there a motion to recommend that budget?
So moved.
Motion made by Aubrey. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Bonnie Yasik. Is there any further discussion? Aubrey?
Sure. I just wanted to maybe reiterate what Mr. Mulally just commented on regarding the Finance Committee meetings we've had and the information he's provided. Highway was on the top of our list of things to discuss, and back in January, when the guidance came out, we were kind of in agreement as to how the guidance would be, would be divvied up. But then also, when we understood that the Highway Department was going to be an exception to that kind of strict guidance, we were open-minded to having conversations with Brian and talking through some of the projects that he had planned. And I think we all can recognize when we look back, and if you join the Finance Committee's public hearing, you'll see many of our departments have increased rather dramatically over the past five years. The Highway is not one of those departments. So we are fully in recognition that, that work needs to be done there, and it is at the top of our priority list. You'll see, as we get later into the articles, that there is some Highway Department capital spending that is put on the warrant for this town meeting that we recommended as a Finance Committee and the Capital Program Committee also recommended, as well as the Board of Selectmen. There's also another article for a Highway item for capital that has been punted until the fall. We have yet to deliberate on that, but in general, we're, you know, we're open-minded as to the conversation that that would entail. So thank you, Brian, for being aware of the financial circumstances we're in and for working with us. And I can just state that, you know, Highway's on the top of our list of things to look at first.
Okay, thank you. Is there any further discussion? Rich?
Rich Gravelo, 39 Grove Street. Can I just get a clarification on line 275, postage and mailing?
Highway postage and mailing. The recommended amount is $24,700.
That seems...
That does seem. I'm hearing a typo is what's being made over here. Should that be in a different line item or...? Under police details, is that what I'm hearing, Finance Committee?
That's what I was, should they be flipped?
So we believe line 274 and 275, the amounts got swapped. So the amount in line 274, Highway Police Details, should be $24,700, and the line in 275, postage should be $2,000. Again, we're voting the total line, so Mr. Mulally can spend that how he needs to. A lot of postage. Are there any other questions, clarification? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. So we're voting in the original recommended budget amount of $143,130. All those in favor, please raise your cards. All those opposed, please raise your cards. The vote is unanimous. So at this time, we've gone through all of the holds. I'm going to ask for the Chair of the Finance Committee, the Board of Selectmen, and our Town Administrator to confirm the new total budget amount that we'll then need to vote on.
Did you do it, too?
I have 6416718.
Same. That's okay. We can do it this year. Okay, we are ready. So I would be looking for a motion to move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $6,416,718 as deemed necessary to defray town expenses for all departments, including debt and interest and compensation for town officers, and to provide for the reserve fund for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2020, and ending June 30th, 2021, with such appropriation to be funded as follows: Raise and appropriate the sum of $6,352,375, and to transfer the sum of $51,547 from the Septic Title V account, and transfer a sum of $12,796 from the FY '20 free cash amount for a total of $6,416,718 as set forth in the budget agreed upon tonight. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Aubrey. Is there a second? Second by Brian Pacheco. Any further discussion?
Sorry, Jackie, I have one more.
Yes.
I just had a question for council, I think. So the $12,796 from free cash, obviously, that's not a final number based on what we might expect our revenues to be in the end. If that number ends up being a lot higher, are we still okay with this motion?
If we need more free cash to fund the budget based on declining state revenues, are we limited to only using $12,796 of free cash based on this motion? Or would we have to come back to a town meeting in the fall to amend that? To amend that?
Is there any way to amend the motion to not have to do that, to the extent free cash? I mean, we might not know what the state revenue numbers are until well into the fall. So it's highly unlikely it's going to be $12,796.
So council's recommendation is that we use this number because this entire budget is based on our best guesses as of today. And if at a later time, revenue sources change, we will reconvene a town meeting to adjust expenses, revenue line items, as necessary to fund this budget. Is that correct? Yes.
If Peter thinks that's reasonable for us, then, okay.
So we have free cash that is available that we could use. It's a discussion between the Administrator and the Council at this point. And I will relay the recommendation. Is that the recommendation?
Yes.
Yes, the recommendation is as I repeated. At this time, we're approving a budget based on what we expect to happen. And if there are changes to state revenues, if there are changes and we need to use additional free cash to fund this budget, we would come back in another setting, another town meeting, to adjust the funding sources of the budget that was approved and potentially adjust the budget itself. Fair?
So something like, or other available funds would not be an option for us with this motion?
Town Council's recommendation is to identify the funds as we just discussed. So is there, there was a motion made, Brian seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of approving the total budget, please raise your card. All those opposed, please raise your card. It is unanimous. Oh, nope, it's not unanimous, sorry. But the motion passes. Okay. That concludes the budget. The next thing that I would like to call your attention to, the next few articles that we have to vote on are going to be capital, no, excuse me, not yet. Article 7, so I'd be looking for a motion that the town vote to fund the cost items of a collective bargaining agreement between the town and the Teamsters Union Local 170 Millville firefighters for the time period of July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2021, in the amount of $2,196, which funding was included in the Fire Department operating budget included in Article 6 of this warrant. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Erica Blake. Is there a second? Second by Jennifer Dean Wing. Is there any discussion on this? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your cards. The motion passes and it is unanimous. The next few articles that we're going to look to are different capital items. So I would like to call everybody's attention to the last page of your handout. The articles are going to be asking for funding from various stabilization articles. So Finance Committee has provided a quick little cheat sheet for you of all of those stabilization articles, their beginning balances, the articles being proposed in the amounts, and then what those ending balances would be. So it's just a quick reference for anybody. So Article 8, we would be looking for a motion that the town vote to appropriate $10,000 to purchase new computer equipment for, from the Public Safety Stabilization Account. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Jennifer Gill. Is there a second? Second by Jerry Finn. Is there any discussion on this?
Yep. Is it okay if I just give a quick overview? Okay. So basically, the computers that are in the police station are on Windows 7, which went end of service life in January of this year. So that means that there'll be no security or maintenance updates. And basically, if anything happens to these computers, we would have to replace them or they would be one less computer for use within the police department. So that's why we're recommending this. Just to give a smidge of background, the Capital Planning Committee started meeting in July of last year to put together a plan looking at expenses, what we should buy, when we should buy it. And we did really prioritize our... And we did really prioritize our top items for this meeting. So, and police department computers is one of those that made the cut.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on this article? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. All those opposed, please raise your cards. The motion passes, and I declare it unanimous. Article 9, I would be looking for a motion that the Town vote to appropriate forty-five thousand dollars to purchase a new police cruiser from the Millville Public Safety Stabilization Fund. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Jennifer Gill, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Erica Blake, is there any discussion?
I'll give a quick overview. So this was one of the things that we also researched over the last few months. I was in touch with the For Haven Police Department, the Wichita Police Department, and others. And they said, basically, when you get to around between the eighty-five and hundred thousand mile mark on cars, they're not really... They shouldn't be used, like, for calls and things like that. So in For Haven, they have a much larger police department, so they actually put them in secondary use from one hundred to one hundred and twenty-five thousand miles. We don't have that in Millville, since we're a smidge smaller. But that was kind of the magic number, after speaking with other police departments, that once a car got to about a hundred thousand miles, that's when you want to replace that. And we worked with Chief Landry, and we said, hey, if we allowed to replace a police car every couple of years, could you manage to that one hundred thousand mile mark? And he said yes. So that, you should expect to hear from us every two years to buy a police car to ensure the chief can manage his police fleet and have police cars available as needed to support the town.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on this article? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of Article 9, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your cards. Okay, the motion passes, and I declare it unanimous. Article 10, I would be looking for a motion that the Town vote to appropriate ten thousand dollars to purchase tasers from the Public Safety Stabilization Fund. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Jennifer Gill, is there a second? Second by Ken Tubman, is there any discussion?
Yep, I can speak to that as well. So the tasers we have, some of them are gone beyond their warranty period. So what that means is, if we were... If the chief were to use one of these expired, or any police officer were to use one of these expired tasers and something catastrophic happened, we would be liable for any of the damages incurred. And if the police officers don't have tasers, then that means they're left with other weapons, which are not tasers, and we would prefer that tasers are available as a first line.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of the article, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your cards. The motion passes. Article 11, I would be looking for a motion that the Town vote to appropriate one hu... That was not unanimous, it was a two-third. Thank you. It definitely passed two-thirds, but it was not unanimous. Article 11, looking for a motion that the Town vote to appropriate one hundred thousand dollars from Millville's General Stabilization Account or Capital Stabilization Account to be used to purchase a new truck with a ten-foot plow for use by the Highway Department. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Jennifer Gill, is there a second? Second by Jerry Finn. Is there any discussion?
Yep, sure. So there is a 2007 truck that the Highway Department's been using, and it's just, it's really on its last legs. And we expect it to just not be usable in the short term, which literally could be tomorrow. So if we don't have this truck available for the Highway Department, that means that we have to start leasing it, and it comes out of the operational budget, and the cost would be far higher than if we were to just purchase this at this time. So we did a financial analysis on the payback period, and roughly in 1.3 years, so about one year and four months, we will start to, I don't want to say make money, but save... Add savings to the town in terms of the operational expenses. So that should help the Highway Department with having some monies available to invest in other areas.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on this? Aubrey?
So the Finance Committee is supportive of this article and excited about it. The one thing we did discuss at our hearing is the funding source. So I know the main motion was Millville's General Stabilization Account or Capital Stabilization Fund. We recommended capital stabilization be used. As you will see in your last page handout, we have several stabilization funds. Capital stabilization is reserved for capital items. Public safety stabilization is reserved for public safety capital items. General stabilization is kind of a general, right? So you can use it for different things. We have a hundred thousand dollars in our capital stabilization fund right now. We are not recommending we deplete it to zero and keep it at zero, but we are recommending that we use that capital fund to fund this particular capital item. And that when we do our stabilization articles in the fall, we replenish that as we are able to with free cash. So, I would like to make a motion to amend Article 11 to state, I move that the Town vote to appropriate one hundred thousand dollars from Millville's Capital Stabilization Fund to be used to purchase a new truck with a ten-foot plow for use by the Highway Department.
And it's been seconded by Adrian. So Finance Committee's explanation of the amendment is that rather than pull the hundred thousand dollars from the General Stabilization Account as seen in your handout, they would like the hundred thousand dollars to come from the Capital Stabilization Account. They're in support of it, they're just changing the stabilization fund that it comes from. Still requires a two-third vote. Is there any further discussion on that amendment? That was seconded by Adrian. Motion by Aubrey, second by Adrian. You're welcome. Okay, seeing no discussion, I will call for a vote of the amendment. So we are looking for a hundred thousand dollars from the Capital Stabilization Fund for the purchase of a truck with a ten-foot plow for use by the Highway Department. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your cards. The amendment passes, I declare it unanimous. And there's no need to go back and vote the original article. At this time, we've completed the business of Town Meeting, so I'd be looking for a motion to dissolve the warrant. Motion made by Jennifer Dean Wing, is there a second? Second by Erica Blake, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please hold your cards. All those opposed? Thank you. At this time, we're going to adjourn the meeting and ask that everybody actually exit through the back. Mima's going to open up that back caution tape. So rather than filter out this way and kind of go through, we'd ask that you just kind of keep your social distance, kindly exit out, don't linger in the parking lot, and have a great evening. Thank you all for coming and participating.